Okay, hello. Those of you that are setting up the seats, there are space in the front row here. So, welcome to the August 20th meeting of the Board of Selectmen. The first item on our agenda today is to have a discussion with two representatives of the Department of Environmental Services, Jeff Martz, who's about to sit down, and his colleague, I believe it's Tanya Justid, is that right? Justid, thank you. And so, without further ado, I will turn the floor over to them.
Thank you, Chairman. As introduced, my name is Jeff Martz. I'm a hydrogeologist with the Hazardous Waste Remediation Bureau at the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. I currently serve in the role as Bureau Chief of the Hazardous Waste Remediation Bureau, and our bureau is tasked with the investigation, remediation, and cleanup of sites that are contaminated by hazardous materials, hazardous waste across the state. So, we work with contaminated soil, groundwater, and other media. And with me today is Tanya Justin. She is one of our hydrogeologists and aqueous geochemists. She has been with our bureau for a number of years and worked in industry before that. She comes with a great deal of experience, and she is currently assigned as the project manager to the New London Cleaners site. So, I want to start out by talking briefly about the site investigation process and how contaminated sites are managed in the state of New Hampshire. So, typically, when contamination is discovered, there are certain regulations that require the reporting of that contamination to DES. And we have a set of rules that guide the management of contaminated sites, referred to as ENVOR 600, if you want to look up our rules. But basically, they outline a process by which sites are investigated after reporting. So typically, once contamination is discovered, there's requirements to do a site investigation. Often, that involves some sort of subsurface exploration, drilling soil borings, collecting soil samples, installing monitoring wells, testing wells, and the purpose is to identify the nature and extent of contamination at a particular site. And then, as more information is gained, we can develop what's known as our remedial action plan to address the contamination. And primarily, the goal is to address the risks posed by that contamination. So, for example, if you have contaminated groundwater and it's impacting actively-used water supply wells, we'd want to get some form of alternate water to impacted well And then, we have another tool in ENVOR 600 called the Groundwater Management Permit. And that is a means where you can monitor and evaluate groundwater quality over time, because oftentimes, when you have contamination in groundwater, it's not possible to clean it up quickly. So, the groundwater management permit process allows us to have an identified zone of contamination, that's a three-dimensional extent of that contamination. And then, the permit that governs that zone will have certain requirements for ongoing testing and monitoring of the groundwater quality. So, we can track that quality over time, make sure the plume is not expanding and potentially impacting other well users or parties. And it's a way of tracking that contamination, managing it, and evaluating the effectiveness of any remedial measures that might be implemented. And most of contaminated sites are, the work is carried out by what we refer to as the responsible party, so the entity that is responsible for the contamination. And they hire a qualified environmental professional, a licensed geologist or licensed engineer, and they typically do the work, submit reports to DES. Then, we review those for compliance, technical compliance, as well as compliance with the rules. And then, we often issue letters, either requesting more information or saying, "Good job, you know, you keep doing the monitoring or the work that you're doing at a site." Or we may have requests and requirements to make other addresses. So, I think with that, I'll turn it over to Tanya to give a brief overview of the New London Cleaners site.
Everybody can hear me? My voice is a little off today. A little closer? Better? Okay. Let me know if it goes off at all. So, the New London Cleaner site is fairly early in the process that Jeff just described. It has had a preliminary site investigation that was done that looked at groundwater contamination on the property itself. There is a groundwater management permit application that is into us, and we are in the process of drafting up a permit for them for groundwater monitoring. But we are also asking them to do the next phase of site investigation to look at the off-site impacts, because, as we know, the contamination appears to be going off the property, so they need to delineate the full extent of their contamination, not just what's on the property. So, it's not a whole lot of information for me to be providing you right now, but that is where the site is right now. It's in the early stages. We know that there is groundwater contamination and that it is going off the property. And we are in the process of getting it managed under a permit and more investigation going on, so we know where this contamination is going and how far it extends.
Yeah, one thing I'll just add, I'll just call your attention to the screen here. So, the New London Cleaners is that small parcel outlined in red in the upper right-hand side of the image. And as you may know, the New London Hospital had done some groundwater exploration, and they had put in a couple test wells for a proposed water supply. Those wells were tested at a high rate of withdrawal intended to mimic what they would use when they're put into production, and they applied for a large groundwater management, a large groundwater withdrawal permit. So, DES, I should probably back up a little bit, is divided into three divisions. We have the air division, which handles matters pertaining to the air. We have the water division, which permits new water supply wells, such as the ones at the hospital. And then, we have the waste division. So, Tanya and I sit in a bureau located in the waste division where we handle, among other things, the cleanup of hazardous waste. Also, within the waste division, we handle landfills and management of hazardous waste before it gets into the ground, as well as compliance with oil, storage tanks, management of oil to prevent contamination and address oil remediation. So, backing up, our water division has handled the permitting process for this water supply well. But essentially, following the completion of a pump test or during a pump test on these new wells, which are indicated by the green dot, the outer yellow dashed line represents a thousand-foot buffer around those wells. So, the New London Cleaners property is about 1,000 feet away from the water supply well that was tested. And low concentrations of contaminants that are consistent with what we know about the release at the New London Cleaners were detected in that pumping test or during the pumping test in the sample that was collected from that well. So, that's why I'm showing that circle there, just to give a sense of the distance and a sense of scale. And my understanding is that, you know, there's a proposed development of the Long Meadows Commons that would also, was looking at potentially using groundwater. And, you know, given the uncertainties with transport of contaminants through groundwater and how far, how great an influence a large groundwater well exerts on the water table, you know, there was a question of the potential for contamination to migrate there. I just want to switch to a different figure, just to zoom out a little bit. So, the figure we were just looking at is down on the lower right-hand side of the screen. Now, we've zoomed out, and I just wanted to show the, some of the town's public water supply wells located on, I guess, a spit of land out in the lake, just to give you a sense of where we're talking about. So, we don't think that there's any kind of likelihood that contamination from New London Cleaners would make it at any concentration to those town public water supply wells. So, I think it's helpful to have the sense of scale of how far away we're talking. I think that's approximately one mile from New London Cleaners to the water supply wells.
1.6.
1.6, Tanya's just clarified. So, Mr. Chairman, I think that concludes the overview we were going to give, and turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you very much, Jeff. And I think what we'll do is we'll start with my colleagues, and I will see if we have any questions for you, and then we will open the floor up to questions, and I'll give some instruction about limiting that to no less than five or six hours, okay? So, Janet, would you like to start?
We sent you some questions. Are you aware of that? Did you, when did they discover the contamination from New London Cleaners? Was it before the wells were drilled at the hospital or not, or after that water was tested?
So, this phase of contamination, media, thank you. This phase of contamination, a lot of these sites have reoccurring things that have happened over the years. So, the chlorinated solvents that are in the ground right now that we are addressing was discovered in 2016, and the investigation has been, was started at that time. So, I believe that would have been before the well was installed for the testing.
What effort was made to mitigate that at that time in 2016? Did you, did they come up with a plan to remove soil or?
Again, we are in the very early stages of the investigation for this site, so they have not reached a remediation level yet because they don't have the full information up until this point where there wasn't information that it was going off-site, off the property, other than highly suspected because of the monitoring well that's at the down gradient edge of the property had higher concentrations, so it was likely that it was going off, but there was no confirmation. Now, we have a well off-property that appears to have stuff in it from these pumping wells.
So, in eight years, nothing really was done to alleviate this problem? Is that what I'm understanding?
Nothing has been done for remediation yet. It is, they have been looking, they have been looking slowly at where the contamination is. Most recently, the focus has been on the indoor air on that property because there is a vapor intrusion concern in the building. And so, that was the highest-risk concern at the time, because the understanding is that municipal water is provided around and that people were not drinking this. So, we focus on risk, and the highest risk at the moment was to people who were being exposed by breathing the air.
All right. Now, what about contamination to the ground? Anything, like if someone were to build a house anywhere in that area, would there be some contamination to the soil?
Unless some, and there is always the possibility that somebody was out there spraying a hose of something, but it's unlikely. The contamination to the soil would be restricted to the property where the release occurred. We don't know exactly where in that property it is, probably under the building, but we're not sure of that yet. But it would be restricted to where it was released, and that's where it gets into the groundwater, and within the groundwater it spreads. But it's not something that you're going to have soil contamination on neighboring properties because of it.
Normally, do you notify abutters or towns when this type of thing happens? I don't think we've received anything regarding this.
The town health officer is CC'd on all of our communications to the responsible party. In terms of abutters, there is a statute that requires that we notify anybody with a supply well within 500 feet of the contamination. Because there was no known supply wells in the area, there were no notifications sent out on this particular site for that. Now, as the responsible party moves forward with their investigation, and they have to do off-site investigations, they need to be reaching out to abutters to get permission to go onto their property to do investigations. So, there will be communications to people who may be impacted, yes.
Hang on, let me see my other questions. So, I guess essentially, what is the future for New London Cleaners now? Are they going to have to be totally responsible for this? Is there a super fund available to help clean up the site? I can't imagine that one small business would be able to do all the remediation that probably needs to be done.
I do not know the financial solvency of the responsible party. Unfortunately, that's a conversation that would have to be had with them in terms of funding. Even the super fund is cost-recoverable, so EPA gets back that money from the responsible party for what they pay. So, it, there is, this is not a brownfield site, so there's not, there's not funding available to support this necessarily. That's something they would have to look into.
Yeah, to add a little more perspective, we have 22 super fund sites located around the state, so that's generally reserved for some of the more serious contaminated sites and in often cases where we don't have a responsible party. So, in contrast, we have hundreds of sites that are managed in this fashion where, you know, we have a small business or some kind of business that is the responsible party and under our state statutes and rules is responsible for hiring a consultant to do the work. So, you know, by far, this is more common, and the super fund route is much less common, and there's a really long process to, you know, bring a site into super fund, and there's a scoring that has to happen for that. So, most likely, I would see the path for this site to remain with the responsible party.
Okay, thank you. I guess, Beebe, it's up to you.
Beebe?
I have a lot of questions, but I think a lot of people here are going to have a lot of questions, too, and I'm not quite sure where to start. My first question is, you suggest that the plume can't necessarily travel to the public water supply, but what about to private wells in that area that are closer than the public water supply?
At this time, I'm unaware of any private water supply wells that are within the 1,000-foot buffer from the property. That is something we have requested that the RP's consultant verify with the water district and check to make sure that all these properties are connected or are undeveloped if they're not connected. And if they are not connected to the water supply and they are developed, then it has to be assumed that they have a water supply well and that we need to assess that and sample from them if they're within the 1,000-foot buffer.
How long does this process take, the owner bringing in a consultant and doing this investigative work? About how long does that process take? And then, on top of that, to then remediate the area? Are we talking years or months or any, you've just, you just said we have hundreds of sites like this around the state, so any thoughts?
Yeah, it can really run the gamut. You know, sometimes, a site investigation in a fairly simple site can be conducted fairly quickly. If you've had a small release of contaminants to a discrete area of soil, you might be able to quickly identify the extent of that contamination, send in a report to DES, get concurrence on a remedial action to remove that soil, and maybe you don't have any groundwater contamination. That can be resolved, you know, relatively quickly, maybe in the course of a year in a best circumstance. But in the case here, you know, I think we have indications that it has reached the bedrock because the test well was in bedrock, pulled water from bedrock. So, we likely have instances where it's made its way to bedrock. My anticipation is that, you know, this site will wind up on a groundwater management permit, because once it gets into rock, it's much more difficult to address. And it's really going to depend on what the site investigation finds in terms of what actions are taken to remediate. Ideally, they could find the discrete source, you know, whether, Tanya mentioned, it might be under the building, that's our suspicion, we don't know. But if they could find a discrete source, there may be techniques to address that source soil that could be an ongoing source of contaminants to the underlying groundwater. So, if you can address that, eventually, the groundwater will oftentimes start to improve. But, you know, there's a number of factors that have to be looked at, you know, is there what we call free product that's made its way into deep soil or deep bedrock? And, you know, that can complicate it and be harder to remediate.
I'm going to, one more question, and I might have more, but back to what you were talking about, about they've been focusing on the vapor intrusion in the building. So, does that also affect surrounding buildings, and will that be investigated as part of this work now with the owner hiring a consultant?
Yes and no. So, up until this point, let me take a step back and try to explain, when we look at the potential for vapors getting into a building, we base it on either soil vapor, which we haven't done here and often isn't done to begin with, but usually on the groundwater concentrations. And there are screening values that we look at for the groundwater concentrations, that if they're above this value, there's a potential, not a strong, but there is a potential that the vapors might be getting into a nearby building, right? The concentrations in the groundwater until April of this year had indicated a potential for vapor intrusion in the building, but not to anything around, because they were far enough away from the surrounding buildings. However, in April of this year, there was a concentration much higher in the groundwater that suggested that there might be some problems at nearby buildings. We are asking them to look at this. They will need to look at other buildings and other properties and assess now whether there's a vapor intrusion potential there. So, yes, this will be an ongoing thing, it's just, it's something that just came up.
Okay, I'm done for the moment.
Okay, so I think the next thing I'm going to ask Nick Baer, our health officer, if he has any questions or comments he wants to make on behalf of the town.
I guess, one question I would have is, based on the hydrology of the groundwater, going back to, I think, Beebe or Janet's question, just about the town wells, the water supply, is there an indication of what direction that groundwater is moving in terms of worrying about other contaminants? You have a 1,000-foot buffer from where they did a well test, but do we have an idea of where that groundwater is moving?
So, my understanding at the site is that groundwater is moving in a southerly direction from New London Road?
Yeah.
Can somebody help me? New London Road down in a southerly direction toward that test well that was located on the hospital's property there. So, away from the town wells, if that helps with your understanding of that.
Yeah, also, just one important distinction on hydrogeology, differentiating that well that was tested on the hospital property from just a residential water supply well. So, the difference here is that that well was pumped at, I think, on the order, or there were two wells that were pumped on the order of a combined rate of 40 gallons a minute, plus or minus. Whereas when, you know, you're, if you were on a residential well like me, you use the shower, flush the toilet, or run the sink, your well pump will turn on and might pump five to seven gallons a minute at max to fill your pressure tank, and then it shuts off. So, the wells at the hospital were pumped continuously for a few days to really kind of test the aquifer and understand the aquifer hydraulics. So, there's a little bit of difference in the extent of what we might call the, I'm going to use air quotes here, the cone of depression that's created from pumping. So, when you pump a well, you draw the water level down in the aquifer. But in a fractured-rock aquifer, that sort of what we might call a cone of depression and overburden is constrained by the orientation of the fractures. So, when you pump a well really hard, the water level drawdown that creates water flowing back to that well can reach out pretty far, which appears to be the case in this test well that pulled in contamination from New London Hospital. So, normally, a residential well, I guess where I'm going is that you don't pump your residential well at the same rate that these wells are pumped. You're pumped at a much lower rate, it's episodic, and you're not necessarily having the cone of influence or zone of influence that these wells had during the pump test.
I was just going to ask one follow-up question. If you could just provide a little more information about the actual specific contaminants and the human health concerns for folks?
Yes, absolutely. So, specifically at the site, they used what is known as tetrachloroethylene, perchloroethylene is another name for it, it's also known as PERC, for those who've been around for a while, it's, that's a common name from back in the 60s and 70s for dry cleaning. It's not used at the facility now, but it had been in the past, and that was what was released. Now, perchloroethylene, PCE, can degrade into other chlorinated solvent products that are not much better. In the case here, we have not seen much breakdown of the PCE, so for the most part, what we're looking at in the groundwater is pure PCE so far. In terms, so that's, that's the concern in the groundwater. In the indoor air, we have been seeing one of the daughter products, trichloroethylene, TCE, which has a higher inhalation risk to it. So, that's why we've been concerned with the facility, because it does appear that under, potentially under the building, somewhere in the Vado Zone, there has been some breakdown, just not in the groundwater. I know I'm getting pretty technical there, so feel free to ask me to clarify any of this stuff at any time if you want more information. Yes, thank you. So, the potential health effects for chlorinated solvents are cancer point, or, I can't.
Cancer endpoint?
Cancer endpoint, thank you. Cancer endpoint as well as some non-cancer endpoints. I don't know all the specifics for the toxicity and what it can cause. Just know it has a fairly high toxicity. The groundwater, ambient groundwater quality standard for the state of New Hampshire for PC is five micrograms per liter, so it's fairly low. And then, again, there's some endpoints, similar type of thing for inhalation, should it get into a building and be breathable. I do want to clarify, though, that all of these numbers that we throw out for standards, for both the groundwater standards and when I'm talking about indoor air inhalation risks, these are based on a lifetime risk. So, this is not something that people need to be panicked, that if they drank a glass of water today, that they're going to be very sick tomorrow. This is something about if you're exposed for, say, I think it's a 30-year length of time every day drinking the water, or 30-year length of time every day breathing that air for eight to 24 hours a day. So, that's what those numbers are based on, is meant to keep you safe over your lifetime.
Anything else, Nick? Thanks, Tanya. So, what I want to do now is I want to ask, first of all, the hospital, second of all, anybody from Long Meadow Commons, and third of all, anybody from the Water Precinct who wants to comment. So, let's start with New London Hospital. Is there anybody here from New London Hospital that has any questions at this point? I see none, okay. Anybody from Long Meadow Commons who wants to ask any questions at this point? Okay, I see one in the back, who's there? Steve? When you come up, please identify yourself and your connection.
Sure, my name is Steve Allen, I live in London, and I've been involved with.
No, it's not. I live in New London, and I've been involved with Long Meadow Commons. You mentioned that the test you had, the last test was 2018. I had heard that there were tests in 2016, or did I mishear you? When was the first test, when you realized it was a problem?
Yeah, the first groundwater data we had indicating that there was a problem was 2016.
And then, did you test again?
We don't test. The RP has their consultant do that. There's been, I think, five rounds of groundwater data, somewhere around here.
When were those tests conducted?
Sorry?
When were the tests conducted?
I don't know the exact dates of those. I know the most recent one was in April of this year, and then there was, I believe, one in fall of last year, or spring of last year.
And as I understand it, from 2016 till today, the levels of PCE have gone up 10 times? Is that, is that true or not?
The, sorry, I had to think for a second to figure out what you were asking, my apologies.
It sounds like they've increased significantly from the first test in 2016.
The, give me a second.
Sure.
So, the concentrations in one well have increased pretty significantly this last round.
How would you define pretty significant?
I'll give you that. So, the first round in 2016 had a concentration of 8.8 of PCE, micrograms per liter. So, the first round in 2016 had a concentration of 8.8 of PC, micrograms per liter.
Okay.
I'm not, I don't, I apologize, I didn't put down the dates for these numbers when I threw them together quickly. I believe this next one is 2018 or 2019, but I'm not absolutely sure. It was 220. That's not, that sounds dramatic, but it's not that unheard of at a site like this to have that kind of fluctuations between rounds and between years. It depends on how the groundwater, if you're in a drought year, or if you're in a flood year, or if you're just in a normal year, those types of things can all affect. However, this last April, or excuse me, May, it was sampled in May, because the pump test was in April, was 2,500. So, that did go up a lot, and that is...
And the intermediate test between 2018 and today...
They weren't able to find the well during that test.
They were not able to find the well? And so, do they have a responsibility to find the well?
Well, they did find the well for the 2024 test.
No, I get that, but I mean, what about everybody living in town? You know, it went up from eight to 200, and then they couldn't find the wells, and then the next time they test, it's over 2,000?
At that one monitoring well, correct. The other monitoring wells have not increased like that. They've been fairly steady at whatever concentrations. The other downgradient well on the other side, the other southern edge of the property, the south-eastern, have to turn it, it's flipped here, is, has been below standard most of the time it's been. It's been below the ambient groundwater quality standard of five most of the time it's been sampled. There are two other wells on the property that do exceed the standard, but they're also located in a location up gradient of this downgradient well that I've been talking about. So, while we know, we know the property is contaminated.
Right.
My concern is that downgradient well that says stuff is going off that property.
Well, my concern is for Long Meadow Common, where we drilled our well, and I believe the preliminary test was there was no PCE, but you told us we couldn't run a 72-hour test because you were afraid that it would cause the plume to migrate. Is that the case?
Yeah, just to jump in here, so, like I mentioned, we have, you know, three different divisions. So, the Water Division would have been talking to you about the permitting of that water supply well. So, you know, often in cases of contamination, now that they've discovered the contamination in the well at the hospital property, we've been talking with our Water Division and coordinating our response on this.
So, did you have a recommendation to the Water Division in terms of letting us pump water or using our wells for our development? We were weeks away from closing on this project after two years.
Yeah, we didn't give them a specific discussion, but, you know, we do talk about the uncertainty, and I know they have hydrogeologists that talk about uncertainty of groundwater flow in fractured rock, and, you know, it's complex, difficult to predict.
Okay, I guess one more question. In terms of the remediation, I assume you would dig up dirt that would be contaminated, and you might put a well in and pump the water and treat it with carbon, or do other ways to treat it? Is that true or not?
Those are some of the many ways that this could be addressed. If contaminated soil is found, yes, digging it up is often the best option. There's also treating it in place, in situ.
Yeah.
There's options for that. Pump and treat of the groundwater is not typically a preferred option. It's not terribly effective, but there are multiple solutions that could be brought to bear for this.
Is the hospital property forever contaminated and not able to use a well?
You know, like I said earlier when we started out talking, if the, often, in some cases, if the source of contamination is primarily in the soil, so that's one scenario that we have...
But you know that's not the case here, right?
Well, I guess we don't, we don't know. There's a lot we don't know. So, if the source of contamination is in the soil, and that can be effectively addressed through remediation, groundwater may clean up. Because the concentrations in the hospital test well, my recollection is it was below ambient groundwater quality standards, so significantly lower than what we see in the onsite monitoring wells, which, you know, range from, you know, 10, 15 parts per billion up to 22, 2,500 parts per billion. We have much greater concentrations at the property where the release occurred, and we're talking about much less significant concentrations some distance away. But what we don't know is that in some cases with chlorinated solvents, they have a greater density and can travel deep into the aquifer. And there's a lot of factors that influence this, because when I talk about aquifers, we simply define them as what we call an overburden aquifer, which is unconsolidated soil above bedrock, and then we have bedrock. And the unconsolidated soil above the rock can have many different properties. We live in a glaciated state. I believe in this area, it's most likely what we call glacial till. And there's different types of glacial till, some that's smeared onto the rock at the base of a glacier, and then there's some that's ablation till, and if you have rocks and soil mixed in with the ice and the ice recedes, those rocks kind of deposit on the ground surface, and there's a different characteristic here. But depending on that overburden geology and the nature of the release of contaminants, you know, we may or may not have a situation where there's actual product that's made its way into the fractured rock, which could be an ongoing source. So, we have, could have a soil source, we could have a source in rock. We don't know what...
And how, will you be able to determine that?
Talk about...
That is part of the site investigation that they will be doing.
So, you will be able to determine?
Hopefully, yes. It is, it's complex.
Okay.
The investigations, they have to go into it.
Okay.
So, exactly when or how is not something I could state, but that would be what they're looking at.
Just one more, one more question. How do we speed up the remediation of that site? What can the town do? What can the citizens do to make sure that happens as quickly as possible? Do you have any recommendations? If this was your town, what would you be recommending?
Yeah, typically, you know, we at DES look at this from our regulatory perspective and, you know, what we have in terms of statutes and rules at our disposal. I know, Tanya, was close to issuing a groundwater management permit for this site, which is one step closer, but it's not necessarily the full investigation that we talked about, identifying exactly where the contamination is, but it starts to get a handle on putting certain requirements on ongoing monitoring. It formalizes the monitoring, so it would require that they find wells that they can't find, or replace them if they can't find them. So, it adds a certain level of specificity to what they're going to have to do in terms of groundwater, and I think one component of that was going to be to continue to delineate the full extent of that contamination. And as properties are determined to be contaminated or not contaminated, some level of monitoring to make sure the plume isn't expanding or contracting.
How can we speed up the process? If there's, for example, if there's contaminated soil, how do we get shovels in the ground to get that soil out of here as quickly as possible? You know, I appreciate all the testing and all that stuff, but it's time, time is of the essence for a lot of people here, so...
Yeah, it's a matter of us requesting work from the responsible party and the responsible party doing that.
He said it's them requesting the work of the responsible party, so can you do that as fast as possible?
Yeah, given that this contamination has traveled off property, you know, this is definitely a high-priority site.
Great, we would really appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Anybody else from Long Meadow Commons interest? Anybody from the Water Precinct want to address any issues or questions? Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, one other thing I wanted to mention, if people aren't aware, all the documents that Tanya is referring to are on our DES website. We call it One Stop. It's a repository of documents, so when the responsible party submits something to DES, it gets uploaded to our website. So, everything that we're looking at, you could be looking at too. And, yeah, I could explain towards the end of the meeting how to go about finding that.
Thank you, Jeff. I'm sorry to look over there. Anybody from the Water Precinct care to make any comments or address? Okay, so I will open it up to other comments. First thing I want to say is try to be brief, and once the first person has spoken, I will not identify, recognize you again until everybody else has had a chance. Bob?
My name is Bob Lyon. I live in New London, and thank you for coming and giving that introduction. As I sit here, things, everything I'm hearing, there's a lot of uncertainty. So, as Jeff and you explained, the PCEs are dense, they're denser than water. So, if there was a point release, I'm thinking if they're that dense, they're not just going to sit in the soil, they're going to filter down, they're going to percolate, maybe hit bedrock, and likely end up in the water supply, and that's why we picked them up when they did the test wells. Is that correct? Is my understanding correct?
There's also the aspect of the, the PC tends to absorb stick to soil. So, while it's dense and it will percolate itself downward over time, yes, it will also leave a trail and stick to the soil, which will retard it, the same as when it's in the groundwater, and it's, it will dissolve slowly into the groundwater over time, and it will move with the groundwater, but it will be retarded at times as it sticks to the aquifer.
So, it's both. Some will stick, it's got some stickiness to it, it'll stick to the soil, but eventually, and in this case, we know, it got into the groundwater.
It did get into the groundwater.
And we know that that aquifer, if I'm using the right term, it's flowing, I think you said, from north to south, so it is moving, potentially contaminating other areas. I'm just getting to that idea, and again, the other point you mentioned, these numbers, these values, these limits, five micrograms per liter up to 2,000, they can vary depending on if we had a drought, if we had heavy rain, who knows what, they can vary a lot, which doesn't give one a whole lot of confidence that if you have a whole level below five micrograms per liter, that you're going to stay there. The following year, it might be 50. So, you're kind of rolling the dice on what you're going to do with that limit. So, my question is, that being the case, removing the soil, if it's already in the groundwater, it almost seems like a fool's errand. I mean, you're going to take out the soil, or maybe you're removing that spot where it's continuing to leach, but it's already in the system. So, is that a fact? Is that true?
No.
Explain, please.
Because if you have material in the soil, as I said, it sticks to the soil, so most likely when you had a release, it's in that area still. It doesn't just flow through and go away. So, it's slowly moving through, especially if you do happen to have something under a building where precipitation is not getting to it to flush it through. And in that case, in any case where it's in the soil, if you remove or you treat that soil and you take away that source material, then over time, that groundwater is going to improve. Whereas right now, you have more of what's called an equilibrium situation, where stuff has been moving for quite some time. We don't know how long ago this release occurred, or how many times releases have occurred at this place. But there is an equilibrium between what has been released, what's in the soil, and what's getting into the groundwater.
I got you.
Okay.
Okay, so can you point to any successes the state has had where you've had a similar point contamination of a PCE, specifically PCE, because that's what we're talking about, where removal of, I don't know, tons of dirt and carrying it away eventually allowed people to use that groundwater for drinking?
That we got to absolutely clean groundwater.
Below your five-microgram-per-liter limit.
That takes decades, correct. Where it has reduced, where you have seen it dramatically decrease, yes, I can point to several of those.
To where it's safe for drinking?
Not to where it's, not necessarily to where it's safe for drinking, because like I said, it takes a very long time to get down to that.
That's what I'm trying to get to, it's just a long, tortuous path that we're looking at.
It can be, it can be. Some places, I have seen it get down, down to that level or very close, but you usually have multiple contaminants. We're, it's a weird thing to say, but we are lucky on this site that it's just this one contaminant, because it's less to deal with.
So, the monitoring that you're going to do, that will answer all of these questions about, one, whether or not heavy-duty soil removal will have any beneficial impact, and, two, if you did remove the soil, how low those levels could get, maybe the variability in those levels from year to year, you'll be able to answer all of those questions for us?
The groundwater permit will have twice-a-year sampling that will give a better understanding than we have right now as to what the groundwater concentrations look like and what that variability is. So, right now, where it seems like it's going like this, based on the information we have, we might see a more stabilized understanding of that based on seasons and, like I said, drought years. Yes, in the site investigation, the intent of a site investigation is to find the source, to delineate the source, and to get the extent of where that plume exceeds the groundwater standard. So, now you can work on pulling that plume back.
Got it.
However the remediation is.
So, just my last question, how soon do we get to that point of you coming back and telling us, here's what we found, here's our recommendation, here is the deal?
Well, again, it's not DES that does the investigation.
Oh, right, that it's going to go through the owner of the cleaners, right?
It's the environmental consultant of the owner of the cleaner that does the investigation.
What happens if they don't have enough money?
That goes through DOJ.
Okay. Typically, in your experience, how long, let's say, you know, the person responsible for the contamination site, typically how long to get to that point, in your experience? A year, two years, five years, a month?
I don't know that I can give you an average. I have worked on...
A range?
I have worked on sites that have wrapped up within one year, and I have worked on not this particular contaminant, I should clarify that, but a contaminated site that was cleared within a year and closed, and I've worked on sites that have been around for 30 or 40 years.
Got it. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Bob. Anybody else? Nancy?
And I realize you are not public health, you're environmental services, but I'll ask this question. Oh, Nancy Rollins, New London. I'm wondering if there are any immediate public health concerns with regards to this being in the groundwater. We have a brook that runs through there and down to a watershed. We also have many homes behind there, or a number of homes, who do a lot of gardening, including vegetables. And I'm just wondering, in terms of, you know, any problems in the groundwater, should there be some concerns related to that?
I am not a human health risk assessor.
I understand that.
I will qualify that. I will qualify this answer.
That's why I said that, I realize you're not public health.
I appreciate you acknowledging that upfront. In terms of gardening, I would not expect that there would be particular concerns. In terms of the brook, that would be something that needs to be looked at, whether there is discharge to the brook and there are surface water standard exceedances in the brook. So, I don't know that right now. I don't believe anybody would be drinking water from the brook. Is there a chance that somebody might be fishing?
Not at that brook, but there would be pets, dogs. And it does go down to a watershed. I think that's the other concern. Lion Brook does go down to Kesar Lake eventually.
Jump in any time here, Jeff. It's unlikely that you have a discharge to that brook at concentrations that are going to not be diluted by the brook when it gets to the next watershed.
Okay.
Okay? I'm trying to couch that in what we do know and what we don't know, but that's an unlikely scenario.
Thank you. And is there any entity that could answer that question, such as someone in public health?
Yeah, we have a group, and I can pass the contact information on to the chair, so we can share with the town, but we have some staff at DES who have experience in health risk assessment, so we could pass that contact information on. I know we do have sites where there's, in some cases, a pretty significant direct discharge to rivers, and we've done testing, and, you know, in a lot of cases, we find dilution happens to where that may not be detectable downstream. So, you know, that's something that the site investigation would have to further flush out and identify if there's a pathway for groundwater to discharge with contaminants to the brook. So, that's something that's typical, typically included as a component of a site investigation if the data warrant, you know, that pathway.
Right, thank you.
Before we go on to another question from the public, we've been talking about the cleaners. There is a adjacent public laundry in this building. Is there any reason why users of that part of the building should be concerned?
In what sense?
About vapors or the water that's being used to do their laundry and that sort of thing?
Okay. Well, the water that would be, that would be used in the facility would be coming from, do you mean municipal water source? So, that's not a concern, unless there's something I don't know about the So that's not a concern, unless there's something I don't know about the water source. Sorry, that was meant as a joke and it was, no.
I think that's correct, I had to ask the question.
So that, it's a valid question. And there, there should not be any reason that anybody should be concerned about using the water in there. There, my understanding is the building has posted that there is some indoor air concerns. It's primarily in the dry cleaner side, not in the laundromat side.
Thank you, I just wanted to get that on the record. John?
Thank you, thank you, Bill. My name is John Fink, I live on Main Street, I'm a friend of Long Meadow Commons. I have just a couple of real basic questions. Many of us have been customers of the dry cleaners for many years. So we're, I guess, part of the ecosystem that has contributed to this inadvertently. How does the chemical used in the dry cleaner get from the premise outdoors?
There are many ways that it can get outdoors. And part of what you have to remember is that this material has been used for many decades and our understanding of these materials really only started in the 1980s, well after people were using them. And so there were some practices in the past that may, that we might look on now as not the best. So there were tanks, I believe, in the building that stored PCE. There could have been leaks out of those. And I'm, I'm not talking unwittingly necessarily. There is the potential that somebody was taking material, that used material, and dumping it out the back door, just because in the 60s and 70s, that's what we did with that stuff. I mean, we used to tell people to dig holes in the ground to put their oil in when they changed their, their oil in their car. So it's, it could be just that they were disposing of used material in the best way that they knew how. The easiest way could be that the tanks themselves leaked a little bit and got into the subsurface. There were some floor drains that I believe connected to the municipal sewer that could have had leaks in them themselves. So that material that had this, water that had this PCE and it got into there and leaked through as it was going to the sewer. So there's a number of ways that it could get into the subsurface.
In your view, is the PCE continuing to enter the soil at this time presently?
No, my understanding from the facility is that they stopped using PCE a number of years ago. And they have provided me with their safety data sheets of what they're using now. And it is, it is not a chlorinated solvent base, so they are, they're not continuing to release anything. There might be stuff in the subsurface still that's there from previous releases, but that's, it's not a continuing issue from the facility itself.
And finally, in your view, do you think the well at the Long Meadow Commons site will ever be able to be used?
Unfortunately, I really can't speak to that, just because I am not in the Drinking Water Bureau. I know their rules speak to not pulling, not, not installing any wells that may pull from, may pull a plume from a contaminated site. And I believe that's what is going on in this situation. But I'm only tangentially involved in their, in their conversations.
And will your studies that you're going to undertake shed light on that possibility?
They should, hopefully, yes, because the intent is to delineate where this plume goes and how big it is. And then, once you have an understanding of where it is, you have a better understanding of where it could be pulled to if somebody were to install a well.
And lastly, any idea how long those plume studies would take to complete and answer that question?
I can tell you that our rules allow 120 days from the request of a site investigation to get us the report. But that does not necessarily mean that that report will have all the answers in it. There might be additional site investigation that has to be built on top of that.
Thank you.
My name's Joe Cubert, I'm a resident of New London. Two quick questions for you. How deep is the soil above the aquifer? How much down do you have to dig out? Anything at all? We're talking 10 feet or 50 feet or 100 feet?
I apologize, I did not look at the stratigraphy before I came today. I do not believe it's particularly deep. I would guess 10 to 15 feet to groundwater at the most. But I would not swear by that.
All right, do you know of any technologies that could be used to treat the water at the site, clean out the perk and use it for human consumption?
Technologies, yes. There, there are several technologies that could be used.
Do you know of any sites in New Hampshire that are doing that now? Now, this is, in this case, we're trying to save the water to be fit for human consumption, not just worrying about the perk spreading into groundwater. We want an opportunity to say possibly treat that water.
Yes, and that, that is the goal of New Hampshire. All of our groundwater is treated as drinkable water. So that's unlike other states that have risk levels that they give to the water, we look at it and say, this has to be cleaned up to drinkable level. It has to be. That's the end goal. We do, there are technologies out there that can get it to that. Whether the RP wants to do those is another question.
Okay, would that be up to the state to say we could go ahead and do that if, if we wanted to fund it somehow? Would they allow us to clean the water, basically?
Yeah, we can, we can ask the RP to comply with our rules to, to address the groundwater contamination. Are you asking if, if the town could undertake a cleanup of the water?
Could anybody take, undertake that? Was that allowable in the state to take water, it's contaminated, and clean it for human consumption?
Yeah, so if you, if you had a water supply well and were, like, this often happens with domestic water supply wells that are impacted by contamination. We can require, through our groundwater management permit process and our statutes and rules, that the responsible party put treatment on that particular well that's contaminated.
Okay, thank you.
Which Karen?
Hi, good afternoon. Erin Meeting, Chair, Springfield Conservation Commission. My question is, if soil removal is part of the remediation process, where does the contaminated soil go to ensure that it doesn't further contaminate other areas within the state or within our nation?
PCE is defined as a hazardous waste in the state, well, in the United States. And so any soil that is contaminated with PCE has to be treated as a hazardous waste itself and it has to go to a lined landfill facility or something similar. It's disposed of based on the circular rules.
Thank you. This is Karen? There's so many Karens.
No problem. My name's Karen Ebel, I'm the state representative for New London and Newbury, and I've worked with the Waste Division quite a bit, so. I, I wondered, first of all, how did you find out that there was contamination at the site? Because we know that you started looking at it in 2016 and what brought it to your attention?
My apologies again, I did not look that up before I came. That predates me at DES and so I am not aware of what triggered the investigation. Educated guess, I would say it was probably a property transfer evaluation. Somebody, somebody was doing a phase one environmental site assessment to see whether they could buy it.
Oh, and then they discovered it?
Yeah.
And so I, I think I understand what you said. Apparently, there was some historic release or series of releases that contaminated a certain area at the back of the building. And so over time, that's continued to spread from the building, but there's also maybe a concentration of it in a certain area. So the more it rains, that's just continuing and continuing? Is that?
Likely. We, we haven't found the, we, the soil source has not been located at this time. We know of the groundwater contamination, we know of soil vapor problems, but we haven't found the actual location of soil that has, has this, these concentrations in it. But it's a reasonable assumption, based on all the other sites like this one, that that does exist here, that there is an area of contaminated soil somewhere, whether it's under the building or behind the building, or somewhere in that area that could be found.
Okay. Well, I think you can tell there's some level of frustration among the people because the process has been relatively slow. And I guess, at some level, I kind of wonder if the hospital wells hadn't been tested, how we would even have known of the magnitude of the spread of the plume? Is that, I mean, so you have a monitoring well program that's set up, but, I mean, at some level, it's not exactly showing the parameters of the problem?
There hadn't been a monitoring well program that was set.
I see.
There, it's, as I said, it was in a site, a site investigation. A site investigation was submitted a while back, 2019. There was a period of inactivity on the part of the RP. In 2023, they submitted some more information. And at that time, we started the process of really pushing hard and saying, we need you to do some indoor air work, there's a great risk here. We need you to do some more site investigation, we need you to submit an application. And we were in this process when unfortunately, all this other information came to light and said that, yeah, this is what needed to be done because the site has more going on than we had known before.
Okay. So you talked, I mean, one of the folks that were asking questions, they were asking about deadlines and how much response time is given. Is that all pretty much set by regulation or statute? How much time people are given to react to, to a plan? I mean, maybe it would be helpful to just talk out what the process is a little bit here. So they've, you've got a, a remed, well, you can say, but you've got a remediation permit request in now and then you must have X number of days to respond? Maybe you could just, maybe it'd be helpful for people if they heard a little bit what the process is from here?
Yeah, so, so oftentimes, so I talked about the site investigation, getting to a remedial action plan and then often a groundwater management permit. In some cases, and, and this one in particular, we wanted to move to a groundwater management permit sooner than later, before we had necessarily all the information on the full extent of contamination. Because that, that gets us into this regular monitoring program where they can't say, oh, we just didn't find the well, you know, then there's some requirement that they either replace it or, you know, go out and look harder. So we wanted to get to a groundwater management permit to, to start addressing and collecting regular data to understand where contamination is. So we're, we're doing that a little bit ahead of the site investigation process, which we expect to happen in parallel.
Okay, and then, so you give them, so they do their permit, you give them, you approve the plan and then they start acting? I mean, what happens then?
Yeah, so, so we'll approve and issue a groundwater management permit and that'll have the monitoring requirements that, that Tanya mentioned, you know, twice a year groundwater sampling. And then they'll be expected to do a site investigation. So we'll be issuing a letter requesting further site investigation. And I'll, I'll let, let Tanya talk to what she is working on in that letter.
It's kind of a mixed bag right now with, with all that's going on, on the site. So yes, this is, this is a first time permit. So they submit the application, we have 90 days to respond, we're in the middle of that. We are writing the permit, it's in review. And then the cover letter has additional requests above and beyond what the permit requires for the groundwater monitoring. So the ground, the, the permit says, thou shalt sample groundwater twice a year from these wells, from these specific wells, and you will maintain those wells. The cover letter then also requests that the off-site site investigation, the full delineation, because our rules, DES rules require that the full extent of the contamination is contained within a groundwater management zone that's attached to that permit. And as of right now, we don't know the full extent of that. So our groundwater management zone is set as the property and that is understood to be preliminary, because we expect that that's going to expand as we get more knowledge. There is also, within the cover letter and within the permit itself, requirements for indoor air monitoring at the property until that is in control and reduced. The vapor intrusion issues there are reduced. And then there's requirements for doing off-site vapor intrusion assessments to decide whether there's risk to any of the surrounding properties. Does that give a better idea?
Yeah, well, I mean, I guess we could go on, but, so basically, though, you said something about 120 days. Once you grant the, the permit, then they're given 120 days to complete the mapping and for you to understand the full.
The 120 days is for the site investigation specifically. So the site investigation has its own part in the rules. And it says, this is what the report, and it's quite extensive, that, of what the site investigation needs to be and what it needs to include in the report. So they have, when we ask for it, they have 120 days to do that work and get us that report. The groundwater monitoring permit and, and the groundwater monitoring is at the same time, but a slightly different aspect of it. This is keeping an eye on what's going on in the groundwater and it's very regimented that they will sample at these times of year and they will provide reports within these timeframes after they sample. So that's a different thing, that's going to be very set, they have to get these things in that timeframe.
Yeah, so it's a very long-term thing. So basically, they have 120 days to give you a plan, then you look at the plan, you approve the plan, they start acting on the plan. I mean, is that kind of the way it goes?
120 days to get us the report that tells us where the contamination is.
And then you have to figure out what to do.
And so. That, the next step from that would be either additional investigation or more likely going to the remedial action plan at that point and assessing what they can do to clean this up.
And, and you set the timeframe for the remedial action that they have to take? Or is that also set by regulatory?
That is set by regulatory.
Is that 120 and it depends? It's okay. I think people, I think we're getting the sense that this is a long-term situation. The only other question I wanted to ask you is, do you have experience with other dry cleaners that have TCE contamination issues that are similar to this kind of a situation? So it's not uncommon?
No, it is not uncommon. Unfortunately, it is all too common that dry cleaners that have used chlorinated solvents in the past do have these releases.
Are, are dry cleaners required to keep an eye out for contamination from TCE as a matter of course, or not?
I'm, I'm not sure what you mean.
Licensing? I mean, I just want, if, if a lot of dry cleaners have this problem, and we clearly do, and it's just having effects that keep going on and on, I just wondered if dry cleaners, which are a potential source of this contamination, are required by the state to test for it in the vicinity? Is there anything that would kind of help us know that we're protected?
There's not necessarily, other than when the property is transferred, when somebody is looking to buy it. Anybody with a modicum of knowledge would do a phase one ESA, which would most likely lead to installing some monitoring wells and assessing whether there had been a release there.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you, Karen. Karen, another Karen?
Hi, everybody, and thank you so much for being here. My name is Karen Epstein, I live in New London. And I guess I'd like to just ask you about the letter from 2023. That mentions analysis of PFAS. So I'm just curious, has PFAS been? So I'm just curious, has PFAS been identified there, and what that analysis might entail, or is that part of the analysis to identify it? And what might those implications be? Thank you.
Dry cleaners, unfortunately, beyond being associated with releases of chlorinated solvents, are also associated with releases of PFAS into the groundwater, associated with the other releases. And so, when we have sites like this, we do ask them to screen for PFAS in the groundwater to assess whether there might have been a release of PFAS at the site. In this situation, we had asked them previously, however, again, because of the indoor air concerns, they had requested that, that screening be postponed, and we agreed to next year, 2025, so that they could get a handle on the indoor air issue and the site investigation. But next year, and I believe it's in the spring, they have been asked to do the screening for PFAS.
So that's not been identified?
Not yet.
If it were to be identified, does it have the same kind of movement properties as the PCE, that you could get into the soil, then to the groundwater, or does it act any differently?
Yes and no, again. It will get into the soil, it will get into the groundwater. It doesn't move quite the same as a chlorinated solvent, however, it, there will be a plume, if it's there, there will be a plume in the groundwater in a similar sense, moving in a similar direction, it just may not be moving with the same speed as the PCE. Whether it's faster or slower will depend on what that plume is, is consist of.
I know, we've been talking about the PCE identified in the, in the well test. Were there any other chemicals identified in those tests that were of concern? For example, was there a PFAS or something like that, or anything else?
Not at this time. There haven't been any laboratory analyses of PFAS that have been run, so there's, there's no way to know, nothing was identified for that. But of volatile, volatile organic compounds, which is what PCE is, there have not been much of anything else that has been detected in the groundwater. I think there has been a little bit of some daughter products, a little bit of CICE 1-2 dichloroethylene at low levels below the standard, but for the most part, it's been pretty straight PCE that we have seen so far. And granted, it's been some limited information, so this is where the groundwater monitoring permit will come in, in handy, that we will get some real information, some consistent information to see what's in this groundwater.
And do you expect to stay on track with that 2025 analysis for the PFAS?
I expect to, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anybody else? Okay, yes, Greg.
Greg Sargent, candidate for state rep, but also a recent person or citizen of New London. I moved to 209 Squires Lane in the past month. I've, first, I want to say thank you for telling me about the DES website, it is fantastic. I'm on it right now. And I have the 2017 report from Horizon's Engineering, which appears to be the environmental engineer that the RP has retained, the RP being the responsible party. Here's some background that I thought everybody would like to know, this is all public information. So this engineer says the source is very likely to be the dry cleaner that has occupied the lot since plus or minus 1940. Use of PCE reportedly, reportedly ceased as of October 2014. A fire partially destroyed the building in 1999, and the remainder of the building was demolished. The concrete slab from beneath the building was crushed and left in place for a month or so before being buried on site. Before being buried on site. The lot is .81 acres, there's a 3,700 square foot building surrounded by pavement that occupies the site. So that's just public information that I thought would be useful for everyone. In a different life, I'm currently Chief Strategy Officer for a business, but I was a General Counsel, and before that, I was a claim adjuster for environmental contamination sites across the country. I don't know that you would know this answer, but for the town and for abutters that are affected, or for developments that are negatively affected and financially impacted, there is likely general liability insurance for this contamination going all the way back to 1940. So every single policy from 1940 until, or, or when the first, I don't know when PCE was, started to be used, but from that first date that it was probably used or probably discharged forward, until the insurance companies started to put in exclusions, which was in the late 80s usually. So you might have 48 years of coverage, which can be, you know, if you assume even a low policy of 500,000 or a million, you might have $20 million or $40 million out there. It does look like there are some other incidents that have happened on this policy, including some underground storage tanks, that might have used up some of that insurance, I have no idea. There are people out there called insurance historians or insurance investigators, that they're in the business of, what they do is, is they research, they'll go talk to the current owner and go back in time and find these insurance policies. Another thing that you can do, if you're motivated, is you could just fire off demand letters to every single insurance company that you can think of, and they have a duty to respond, and you might get lucky. And you think of some of the larger ones that have been around for a long time, they might have insured that business. Or a local agent here, or their family might know who issued the policies. It's a great source of revenue for people affected by this. And that's it. So thank you very much for being here, really appreciate the information.
Thank you, Greg. Now, I'm knowing that in meetings, when you reach about an hour and a half, it begins to, people begin to squirm, so I'm going to ask anybody who wants to speak to realize that they're in squirm time now. Okay, Bob?
My name is Bob Bowles, I'm a resident in New Hampshire, and I'm not going to say that you said that just because you saw my hand up. I want to go back to what Steve Allen Beast raised, which is the Twin Pines Project, which you may know as the Workforce Housing Project, has had a well put in. And my question is based on my understanding from what you have said, and it may require you reaching out to the other division in your place, but as I understand it, this water, you have stated, flows south, and it got picked up in areas near the hospital, which is south. The property at Twin Pines is to the west. You've also stated that there's no longer any more of these PCEs going into the property. You've also stated that they get sticky and stick to the soil, and it seems to me as a practical aspect of this, for a project that's been in the works, very important to this town, a lot of money spent, that the state, you could reach out to your other division, the state could review this, and it seems to me logical that they could say, for Twin Pines, not the hospital continuum, because of the westerly direction, because no more PCEs are going in, because it's sticking to the soil, because there are technology solutions to clean this water, because there are filtering solutions to clean this water, because it could only be sucked in a stream a certain distance before it gets taken in by the soil, that the state could step in, and they would have to do it fairly quickly, and say, we've looked at this, Twin Pines, you can put those wells in if you do this, if you put in technology, if you put in filtering, if you monitor it, and you could have a very helpful solution to a very big issue in this town. So I'm asking you to look at that, talk to your people, see if there aren't solutions, see if the state won't step in and say, okay, in certain conditions. And I hope the Twin Pines could be able to move forward, now the state has told them they can't, maybe they can tell them they can. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Anybody else? Karen, John Ellis has not spoken yet, so he gets to go first.
Hi, I'm John Ellis. Thanks to the selectmen for inviting you, and thanks to you for having the courage to come today. I had a question, you had mentioned that the letter, the contamination letter that notified the town of this issue was in 2016, and you said the health officer was CC'd. Who were the parties that that letter was sent to in 2016?
Well, we became aware of the issue in 2016, and we would have sent a site investigation request at that time. It is sent to the responsible party, so in this case, the New London Cleaners Incorporated, through their owners, it is CC'd to their consultant, and then to the town health officer. We may not always have the right email address, so if that has been the case, that it has not been getting to somebody, that's something we would want to know.
Right.
But that's, those are the people who are carbon copied on, on the letters that are sent out.
That letter would have, you had mentioned, and correct me, that there's an air, water, and waste division, is that correct?
Uh huh.
That letter would have just come from the waste division of DES?
That specific letter, yes, would have come from the Hazardous Waste Remediation Bureau in the waste division, correct.
Right. And would the other two divisions of your organization, air and water, gotten a copy of that letter that you sent?
Not directly. There are many different subsections with each, within each of those divisions, and if they don't have any reason to be a part of that investigation or that site, they're not CC'd. They're not, however, all of our information is in our databases for anybody to check. So in the situation, that something comes along, if somebody wanted to install a well on that particular property, it would be looked at, and that information would be seen, yes.
Just as if, if there was the wrong email, or someone didn't read their CC, which many times happens, they might not have read it in the database either. Is there any chance that you could change that and include them as direct parties, and include our selectmen in New London as a direct party, so that we're at least aware of this issue, which affects all of us?
John, let me interrupt you and say that the health officer does keep us involved in anything that's going on, so I don't think we need to add additional town officials. And is your line of reasoning going to take us somewhere, because I am watching people behind you squirming?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'll just, I'll just speak briefly to information sharing. You know, we send out numerous letters, you know, probably hundreds a year, I don't even have an exact count, on the hundreds of sites that we manage, so I don't think everybody in all the divisions could read every letter. But what we do do is maintain GIS databases and maps, and actually, they're publicly available, you can go on the website, in addition to seeing the document repository, you can look at our publicly available maps, which show the location of all the contaminated sites in the state. So those are mapped, so, you know, if, if, if our water division or air division had a reason to be interested in a particular area, you know, there are contaminated sites mapped, to the extent they're accurately mapped, every once in a while, you know, while we strive for accurate mapping, you know, we do find some that are in the wrong place, and, you know, we correct those as soon as possible.
How often, how often does this letter go out? That's my last question.
The letters go out as, as needed, with, in response to documents that are submitted to DES. So in the case of the groundwater management permit that we're going to issue, that's going to have a requirement for periodic reporting, probably annually, in this case, to start out. So we would expect an annual submittal from the RP documenting the work that they do to test, test the groundwater as part of the permit, and then we would expect another submittal related to the site investigation. So, you know, they come in at different time periods for different sites.
Okay, thank you.
So Jeff and Tanya, I want to thank you for what I consider to be a very open and direct response, and honesty with us today, obviously, you're early in the process, we might invite you back at some point, as you can, can see, but thank you very much for your time and effort.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
For those of you in the audience, if you want to stay for the rest of our meeting, you're welcome to, otherwise, please exit the building quickly so that we can continue. the room? If you'd like to continue with our meeting, please stay. I'm not going to call on them until I get rid of the rest of the people. So, water, water everywhere, not a drop to drink, right? I'll wait for Janet to get settled, and then we'll get, get started. So Janet and Bebe, this is really a continuing discussion among ourselves that we started last Wednesday evening about the future of the Bukeur Building. And I think when we saw the conclusions demonstrated graphically by LBA on Friday to the advisory committee in terms of the lack of possibility to continuing to use the Bukeur Building for police function in any manner that comes close to matching the program that's in place, that we ought to, we need to stand back again. We're reminded that in 2021, Chief Cobb stated clearly in one of the reports of the Building and Facilities Committee Subcommittee, that in no way did the building suit the needs as she saw them. That we're at a sort of a juncture point here, I think we, I would like to see us, the three of us firmly acknowledge that the needs of the police function have of the police function have really outgrown the Bukeur Building and that the only rationale for continuing to consider its use for existing, an existing site for the police is that it might be the cheapest option, and I use cheap on purpose, even though it fails to meet all of the needs that have been identified. So in, if we can discuss that and maybe agree on it, I would then say that the selectmen should make it clear that we're no longer going to support the expenditure of town time or funds on the Bukeur location for police activity, other than to provide a cost estimate for the town, a town meeting regarding that particular site. And we're going to ask our consultants and our other town employees to concentrate their efforts on looking at the other options. We spent a lot of time on Bukeur. We started a talk last Wednesday evening about other uses for Bukeur. I think we're convinced to one degree or another, there's considerable need for that building for other town functions. So it's not a matter of we're going to have an empty building left. And I think the charts that we saw on Friday morning are as clear a picture as I've seen of the fact that it's time for us to say that we're not going to support any further action in that regard and that we want the consultants to focus entirely on alternate sites. So that's the purpose of bringing this up now because there's no sense waiting until next Wednesday night's meeting, if that's the way we feel, or maybe we want to wait till next Wednesday night's meeting. But I know at the end of, what I heard on Friday morning at the close of the meeting was that the architects were looking for direction from us as to what they want us to do about the continuing request to spend time and effort on the Bukeur Building.
I actually started, and this could just be me, it sounded to me like Tony was starting to say that in order to get the site, in order to put the police station here at the Bukeur Building site may cost a lot more money than we've been thinking these years. So I'm not necessarily convinced that the police station staying here in Bukeur Building would be less expensive than putting it on a brand new site. That was just the way I was taking some of the things that he was saying at the meeting on, on Friday. What stood out to me also, looking at those block charts, was again, the limitations externally. I mean, there just, there's lots of limitations around on this site that, that, you know, affect the efficiency, the safety of the police department remaining on that site. I promised at the beginning of this, this process to remain open-minded to many people that have spoke to me about this. But I'm really leaning towards the fact that I just don't think that the police station can stay here on this site. That's, that's, I'm about 97% there. So I, I, I'd rather spend the money with La Valley Brenzinger on looking at, you know, other test fit sites in town. And I think they're doing a fantastic job, honestly. And I'm far from an expert on construction or any of that stuff. But I think the way they're explaining everything in a very detailed manner, taking into account all of the things that Chief has been asking them for. Yeah, I, I think we should come to that decision as well. And I think, but again, we need to make sure that we are explaining to the voters what the, you know, the cost for a new station, along with the cost of getting Bukeur to a point where it can be utilized and not sitting here and crumbling. That's my thought.
Janet, you have any thoughts?
No, I, I, I agree with what Bibi has just said. I think that trying to repurpose this building for a police station is, is ridiculous at this point. From all we've heard from going back to the Harriman Study and in 2018 in our town report, it was noted that we were going to move on. We were going to find another location for the police station. We've said this in the master plan, that this is one of the main goals of, of the community is to relocate the police. And I think probably one of the biggest factors is the fact that we need to use this building for other purposes. Down the road, we're going to need it. And since we cannot keep squeezing the police into this building, I think that we, we need to move on. And it's time that we did that. The site is not a good site for a police station with Siemens Road, with the traffic that happens on Siemens and the fact that our police vehicles are not, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't like to see a fence around this building. And I guess that's what we've talked about in order to secure vehicles. And I don't think that's a good idea. I don't think it's a good idea to try to repurpose this building with the police here. I think we'd have to move them out. And I know that would be very expensive. So for all those reasons, I would like La Valley Brenzinger and the Police Study Committee to look at other sites and come up with a suggestion, but also to know what it will cost to use this building, to use Bukeur for other purposes rather than a police station.
Yeah, I think it's important, that last point, Janet, to, that is part of the ongoing work that we do on other uses is to be able to articulate the cost of that as part of the cost of moving the police out. So I don't think we should leave the impression that we're not, that we're going to try to duck the cost of reusing the building. I mean, clearly, there's the things to be done and part of the reuse is going to be some of the basic conditions of the building, which hopefully that conditions report that we saw a draft of a week ago will be a guide to us in terms of what we have to do to the basic building. And then as we go through our discussions we started last Wednesday night, we can agree on specific uses for different parts, then we can begin to articulate what might have to be done for those parts. So for example, if we use the upstairs for offices, you know, what needs to be done to make offices out of that? Or if we're going to use some part of the building for a care facility, what would that require and so on? But I, I think we owe that part as the total package in terms of Bukeur, but not for the police. But we do also, will have to at the end, come up with some range of costs of having the police here. There've been suggestions that it could be done as easily as just taking care of the infrastructure, the mechanical systems and putting a new coat of paint on. And that's a really low cost. So we may want to actually give a range of costs that we can calculate for the building. And I happen to still think it'll probably be less than a new facility by the time we acquire land, because we know we don't have land and do the site work and so on. But the, this police station that we're talking about is for the future, it's not just for now. I mean, this is for the children and grandchildren of the people that live here. And somebody made that point the other, other morning, that, you know, we're not really doing this for ourselves now. And even the current police force, we're doing it for 20-plus years out. So I, I think we've got to go that way. And I don't sense any disagreement with my suggestion that we limit the cost or not expend any further town employee and town dollars on the, on the Bukeur Building for police purposes. Do we need to do any, is that clear enough? Or would you?
You're to me.
Is that clear to you? Okay. Any, anybody in the public want to comment on that line of reasoning and thinking that we're doing? Karen?
Hello again, Karen, Karen Epstein. And I guess, if I could, if this is okay, I was curious in terms of the last meeting, they had like a, a charrette, a just a kind of open discussion about what the possibilities might be to use the space. And these thoughts, is it okay if I ask them now because they didn't occur to me at the moment?
Sure.
In terms of like childcare, Janet, I think you had mentioned that. And some things came into mind in terms of, with the people working in the childcare area, would they be employees of the town?
No.
And usually with, in these care environments, whether it be child or elder care, it involves some food preparation or food service in some regard. So I'm just was kind of thinking in my own mind what the implications could be as far as ancillary costs. The other one that jumped out, that jumped into my head was insurance. Like, you know, you're taking care of people. So the liability could be different than what you'd see in a normal employee environment. So those are just some questions that came into my mind after the meeting. And I thought I'd raise them today if I could.
Good questions. I don't know if you want to answer that, John?
Well, I think, you know, if, if someone were interested in establishing a childcare facility, say in the basement, I think they would have to give us a plan that would include, you know, their, what their insurance, they'd have to have insurance, they'd have to have teachers, they'd have to have a, a model. So I'm just saying that I know that there's a need for childcare. And if there's someone who might be interested and willing to do the work to find out how that would be, become a reality, then I think we would be open to hearing it.
Okay.
So I, I think, Karen, that I tried to say a few minutes ago, that we, we have to continue the discussion we started Wednesday evening. And there were several ideas thrown out there. And all I was trying to suggest, we will have to include, once we said, here's a plan that we think is viable, we'll have to include the costs of that plan as part of the cost of moving the police station out of here. We're still early stage of that, but we're trying to move several different pieces together. And I'm, I was trying to assure you and others that we will try to incorporate the cost, the costs of all the different aspects of potentially having the police move and having new functions coming. But we haven't yet decided whether the idea of offices, the idea of a childcare center or whatever, that was sort of a first cut on Wednesday night.
Exactly. And that's why I just wanted to.
But I, I think I would agree with Janet on that, that we, that certainly not, I wouldn't imagine the town would undertake getting into the business itself.
Well, you know, I assume nothing these days as we're living through interesting, the meeting we just had. I think maybe some assumptions were made early on. And in fact, sometimes if you vet things as more thoroughly as possible, you can avoid surprises down the road because they never seem to be good ones. The other thing I would just mention is sort of, again, this is just me speaking freely, haven't done any investigation or anything, but the thing that come, haven't really thought this through in great detail, but the thing that comes to mind is mission creep. And we hear that a lot where, you know, you, you, you just, you know, you want to do something. So before you know what you're in, taking on another responsibility, when in fact, there's so many other needs per se that may need to be addressed or may need to have some priority. There's, there's limited resources. And so I would just caution about that to, as we push the boundaries of the mission of the services that the town is providing, that it opens up expense, it opens up liability, it opens up trade-offs, like what aren't we doing, what, you know, what's the balancing there? What did we not do because we're, we're doing this? So I know this is, you know, a free, free and open conversation. And that's why I, I bring that up to, as, to, to keep that in mind, that we have these trade-offs. I mean, Janet, you say there's, there's, you know, you are talking to people who, who see that as a need. And I'd be, you know, be curious, we all hear different things from people. And I think it's sometimes it's, and not to say you're, you're not doing this, but to sort through what we're not hearing as well. So I just wanted to raise some questions at those points.
I guess one thing I would emphasize is that we have been discussing the need for a new police station for over 20 years now. And it's been repeatedly in our capital improvement plan. It's in our master plan. People know that this facility, Bukeur, is not suitable for a police station. So even though there may be other opportunities for using Bukeur once the police move out, I think we have to hold on to the fact that we need a new police station, that what we have is inadequate and the site is not suitable for our police.
Well, I would be interested in seeing the presentation as put, when you get to that stage. I mean.
Well, we will, we will. But we're at the very beginning of this, we're talking about Bukeur for other purposes.
I understand. And that's why I wanted to raise my questions at the very beginning and not come in after the fact, because I think, you know, and I, and I appreciate the fact that you invite people to bring forward any comments or concerns sooner rather than later. So I thank you for that. Okay, thanks.
And Karen, please feel free to participate in the discussions we have about other uses. We raised a few ideas the other night and we'll, we'll see where they, where they go. But that was only sort of the opening shot, if you will.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Yep. Anybody else? Nancy?
Nancy Marashel, New London resident. I'm going to sound like a broken record. If you're going to keep the police here for a while, I would still ask you to put the bulletproof glass in their offices. Chief Cobb asked for that. I come from Newbury where somebody was killed in our town office. So I think if Chief Cobb thinks that needs to be there, it should be there.
You may recall, we discussed that last Wednesday night. And the dispatch in the lobby is already bulletproof. Bulletproofing and securing the town offices is a top priority. And the remaining windows along Siemens Road here will be done also. So I don't, that should no longer be a question in anybody's mind.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yep. Rich?
Rich Epstein, resident, maybe following up on the daycare center. So now here in, let's actually look at it as just, you wouldn't be trying to hire a day, the people who run it, you would just get another business. So, but what prompts, how do we direct it to a daycare center versus a barber shop or a tattoo place?
Rich, it was just one idea that someone mentioned when we were looking at Bukeur. So just put it out of your mind because we're not anywhere close to having an idea of how it would actually happen.
Okay. So there's no, there's no, I mean, it sounded like you're trying to make it appealing by making it a daycare center.
No, we threw out, yeah.
It could be any business.
We need storage for clean recyclables. We need all sorts of things. But that was just one thought that someone had when we were looking at Bukeur. So don't, it's not a done deal. We're only just throwing it out there.
Okay. And on the previous meeting, a resident happened to ask about the digitization topic. And you expressed how the things you want space for are not documents. But of course, if you actually did the work, it would free up space to then put things that are not documents. I just want to kind of point that out.
Okay, thank you.
And I had one more thing and I've been getting it right now.
But do listen to what Janet is saying. We're, we're at this idea stage at this point. And I think I was the one who said on Wednesday night, there's a big room downstairs in this build, underneath this building, actually, it's not even Bukeur, that has access to the outside. And that would be a possible place where you might put some sort. I said, care facility, after school, adult, child, and so on. And that is as far as that discussion went. But it was, here's a, here's a sort of blank piece of paper in a big room with an exit to the outside with a traffic pattern through it. If there were a need for that sort of thing in the community as part of the services we provide to our, our residents through COA, through the VNA and so on, that might be a use. That's as far as it's gone.
Okay. Are we open to?
Our barber shop was not on that list.
Okay.
No, no one.
Maybe a hair salon, because we don't have any of those in town.
A real estate agency.
I figured, I wanted to follow up. It sounded like at the last meeting, the last police station meeting, the topic came up about whether or not the recreation space area was potentially something that can be considered in when they do the possibilities in the project. And it sounded like it was going to go back to you all in terms of, have you come to a decision?
Well, that goes right back to the question of the rest of the town's needs. We could, I suppose, expand the current police station all the way to this stage. But all that would do is eliminate space the town is using for other purposes now. Then you'd have to find the need for that. So it's, you know, you can't, you still can't, you can't squeeze everybody else out and then say, now where are you going to put those people and now we can fit the police station in? And some people thought this room ought to be part of the police station, right?
Okay, but I mean, it may change the financials.
The answer is the conference room. The answer is, the conference room and the recreation department offices and the bathrooms on the hall are all current uses that are connected to other needs of the town. So to give them up to the police station in order to get another, if you look those carefully at those diagrams, one thousand square feet, doesn't solve the Buker problem any, the police problem anyway. So the answer is, we're, we're not in the business of further squeezing what, what we already are using to put more space onto the chart for the police station, which still isn't enough. On Saturday morning, they, on Friday morning, they put thirteen hundred new square feet out here over a roof, and still we're three thousand feet short of meeting the program.
But the costs for the needs of a police station may not be equivalent to the cost of the needs of the recreational department?
And I said, I think, a few minutes ago, that we're gonna consider all of those pieces as we put, um, put the final proposals for town meeting six and a half months from now together. We're obligated to do that, to give people a full picture of all the different moving parts. But all we're trying to do this afternoon, I believe, is give direction to the town administrator to inform the advisory committee and the, um, consultants that we do not want them to spend any more time on the police station use of Buker. It doesn't mean we're not gonna spend time putting the costs together, we don't want the town to spend any more town employee time or town dollars on the police station for Buker. We want them to put all that effort into the new facility, and we would urge you and others to work in a positive sense, to say, how do we get to yes on another site? What do we have to do to make a, a reasonable development of a new police facility on another site work that is both functional and within reasonable cost? But those are all things ahead of us between now and, um, at least the end of the calendar year, when the budget committee starts to work with us on the, on the numbers for the warrant and so on. But we're in early in a process that just got started, um, when did we hire LBA? Six weeks ago?
Couple months.
Yeah, not very long ago. So, and the, the great thing about the open public process is get, get to see all the dirty laundry before it gets washed.
So I, I'm, I'm, I might have to like, listen to the recording of this meeting to make sure, I, it, it almost sound like you're saying leaving the police station in Buker is now off the table.
I said it's off of, it's off of our recommendation, the town meeting will make the decision.
Okay, but will the, um, the, the LBA, whatever they're called, will they still be providing that as part of their analysis, what it's going to cost?
We will be using charts like this to demonstrate that the needs of the police function do not fit in this building or on this site.
So that sounds like you're saying it's no longer an option.
Sounds like what?
It sounds like you're saying it's no longer an option.
No, I'm saying, we, the selectmen, the town meeting will make a decision.
But the town meeting needs information.
We will provide all of the information the town meeting could possibly want. It's our obligation.
Which will include, so that the information we get out of the police meetings will be, include the costs of what it would take to have the Buker still be a police station?
Let me try again. We will not ask the current consultants to provide any more information on Buker, because every minute they spend costs money. We, the selectmen, will find a way to provide that information before it's needed. Whether we, uh, how we do that, we still haven't decided.
Okay.
This is a public meeting, you haven't heard us decide that yet, have you?
Okay.
But we will have that information. We will have that information. It will not come from the police advisory committee, or from LBA, or from Colliers.
Interesting, okay.
Is that clear?
I guess I'll, as clear as I can get it for now. Thank you.
Anybody else? Any other business? Bibi, anything you want to say?
No.
Sorry, I took, took, took over. You okay? You, you okay?
Yep.
You want to give me a ride home? Motion to adjourn?
Some vote.
All in favor? What?